It's right.
Alright, so, call this meeting to order at six thirty.
Two.
Two, thank you. Alright, is clerk would you call and roll?
Yes, Jim Schrader.
Here.
James Cartman.
Here.
Isaiah.
Here.
Bart Scott.
Yes.
Cindy.
Yes.
Tom.
Yep.
And I'm here.
Alright, I have approved votes, please, you want me to pledge a pledge of allegiance?
United States of America, and to the Father, the Father, and the States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Alright, motion to approve the agenda. Cindy, discussion. Hearing none. Jim?
Yes.
James? Sandy?
Yes.
Bart?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yep.
Although yes as well. Motion to approve the Board of Education meeting.
So move.
Uh, let me finish on August twenty-second, twenty sixteen.
I'll still move.
Okay. Tom?
Yes.
Discussion? Gotta wait two. Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Bart?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yep.
Although yes as well. Do I have the motion to approve the payroll approvals and disbursements?
So move.
Second?
Discussion? Hearing none. Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Bart?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Tom? Yeah. Although yes as well. Reports. Board President, I got nothing to report. Football team's three and oh, I believe softball teams do well. What's that?
Yeah.
Pulled up the wrong meeting.
Yeah.
Yes, uh, football, football won again Friday night, they are three and oh, and they have beat two of the top teams in eight man football, in fact their first game that they won was the runner-up from last year, however, they lost their two big linemen that were preferred walk-ons to UW Madison. So, but still, they won.
Alright. You think for us, Randy?
I checked, um, good, close to counting up who's really good, but I looked at enrollment and, um, and who's where else, but I, enrollment looks pretty good, looks like we're up just a couple gaps, so, that's a lot better enrollment going the other way, so, that's good, but we'll follow up on that, and can we count on Friday?
Is this the Friday counter?
We can, so I have some real numbers, I'll give you an update after that, but just, I grabbed some time today to do that. Otherwise, we had, um, Dale facilitated a district leadership team meeting today, and it was good, heard some things that we have to do, and talked about some instructional stuff, and it was a nice way to finish on that.
Alright, committee reports, we've got two, public and government relations.
We had some discussion regarding our brochure, um, working on some changes in that, that's kind of a future goal, um, priority, we worked on our social media, namely the Facebook page that we're hoping to get up and running, um, hoping to get staff involved, um, kind of to get the community connected to what we're doing in the classroom, not just our extracurriculars, but really to showcase, um, some cool stuff we're doing, um, in the classroom, so that's gonna be hopefully a future goal, um, we also talked about some confusion of logos and signage and kind of an overabundance of different things coming at us, and, um, it might be, yeah, different vanguards, different logo, you know, um, definitely stepping away from the traditional horse and, but anyways, um, we wanted to know if that's something that you guys would agree to discuss at committee, to kind of go over, um, or if you wanna...
So like you're, it's kind of a consensus of the board, so you just wanna discuss that, just like the types of logos?
I think there should be one, one or maybe two.
Right.
And I think you should involve, um, the board committee, I think you should involve Rich, I think you should involve all the coaches, um, I'd probably even talk to, like, uh, Mr. Black, and, and, um, get everybody involved and come up with a logo we wanna use and stick with it, 'cause I know Sandy and I were talking about that the other day, because football now has, it's not a different logo, they just use the word vanguards, and, you know, which is fine, but...
Well, it kinda got out of hand, whereas people were just putting whatever they wanted on, you know, where it just, you don't have one standard thing that people can identify with, so...
So, consensus of the board is to kind of work with us in committee and see what you can come up with?
Well, as the, uh, oldest member of the board, uh, back in nineteen sixty-five, when the school, or sixty-two, when the school was, talk of consolidation, Vanguard had a completely different meeting.
Yes, it did.
And...
The rockets.
To do...
Because they blew the launch pad.
That would, that would be a, another idea, uh, do we wanna go back to the retro Vanguard of, of a rocket?
People present that in your math, Mr. Schrader.
Not that it makes any difference to me, because I was only, like, nine.
Well, you're not only the oldest member here, one-third of the public relations committee is the oldest.
That's alright.
You can represent.
So I have another question, um, the newsletter, the monthly newsletter, is that done now?
And, and must people email?
Well, they have, there's a chance to respond in there if you want to.
Right, they can sign up.
So they can still get one, if you called and you want, or you re-mailed back or emailed back and wanted one?
But if they want one, then we have to mail it out, correct? Okay, well, the whole purpose of mass mailing was...
What's that?
I don't think that's what was stated in the...
No. What's the, is, the last paper, the last paper, um, newsletter went out, and then Courtney has put together an entire, like, mailing list, and so the next time when it goes out, it's going out through Messenger, is it called Messenger or something? Through Skyward, it's going out through that way, so it's not going out by paper.
Right, but if people don't have means to computer access, they can still, right?
There's a lot of elderly...
I thought we had a lot of...
That's my, we wanted to speak.
Yeah, I don't remember talking about that.
I mean, you talked about that, change this.
The committee did?
Mm-hmm.
Well, something like that, I think the whole board trip, because I don't agree with that, the whole purpose of doing that newsletter was to get the entire community involved with what was going on with the school district, um, because if you really look at our demographics, of all of the population, only less than half, probably closer to thirty percent have kids in the district, so, as we were going for referendums, that was a way to get it out to all of the community members, so that they knew what was going on, and it was cheaper to do it bulk mail than it was to send it out with the actual stamp on it.
So, why don't we, why don't we take a vax committee, look at it, then bring it to the full board, and see if we need to resume it, um, because the thing is, it was bulky, it was outdated, it was cumbersome, it needed to be streamlined in a major way.
I also thought the idea was that anybody who, in addition to school, any of those community members, you'd also be sending it by email.
That was true.
Everyone and anyone, even if they don't have kids.
Right.
We would still be sending it as well.
I'll bring it to the, I'll bring it to the full board, we'll put it on the next agenda.
I don't remember it costing that much to send it out. It, it doesn't.
No, we'll bring it to the full board next, and then we'll talk about it, 'cause see what we can do from there.
The cost is about three hundred and seventy dollars to come out.
And, and the amount of, I think, gosh, uh...
It's three full days of copying.
It was also the fact that it was the big garbage day at the Black Earth that made somebody, uh, will stop us.
It, it probably is, but...
But it's still a way that we're...
And another thing, as, as a member of the Iron Horse Cornet Band, we have many elderly people in that band.
Yeah.
I mean, we have eighty-year-olds, and guess what, how do, how do we communicate with the band? Email.
Okay.
Well, I already, I already got complaints, so I'm just...
I didn't get any complaints yet.
I did.
Were they from people that don't have computer access, or they just wanna physical copy?
Both.
Well, it's a fair, I mean, it's a fair point.
A lot of people don't like scrolling, if their internet service is slow.
I work, I work with a lot of people in the band, and it's one of the best ways to do it, they can reply immediately, if they wanna be off the list, I take them off the list.
Are you saying you don't know anybody in the community that does not have computer access?
Um, yeah, I don't.
No.
No one.
Okay.
Well, and I think that's why we said, if there are a handful, if there are ten, fifteen, twenty, why not have those people contact us and we can send them a physical copies? I thought that's what we talked about, but maybe...
Yeah, maybe it would be worthwhile to see how many people are requesting paper copies, so you have an idea of a number to compare the postage.
I'm gonna put it on the agenda next time, I think it's a fair point to be discussed.
But how do you just get that information out to those people?
We could restart it if we do the suicide, sorry, it didn't say, we can restart it if we have to, we stole the list, they haven't gone away.
I'm just saying, it's...
They're only getting sold...
Yeah, she's getting...
Well, there was a note on the front page.
That said you could get an email, not hard copy.
Well, but it said, like, if you have questions or whatever.
But again, I think that that's something we should discuss, because my opinion was that it was supposed to be also a hard copy opportunity, which goes into your point, which is, how much more does it cost, which is fair, so, I'll run the next agenda, we'll talk about it, I think it's fair enough. Alright. And then, employee relations.
Feels like it was a while ago.
As well.
It was.
Um, we actually will be bringing our information through the executive board tonight, um, we sat and talked a long time regarding teacher compensation, I think we came up with a pretty good plan, um, very good plan, um, we have also, I'm working with, uh, Randy to set up meet and greets with teachers, with support staff and admin staff, so, hopefully those dates will come soon, very soon.
Alright. Public affairs.
Hi, I know. I have two things that I wanna talk to you about. I put some flyers over there, so the first one is, is a fundraiser for tutor dot com, and in case you guys didn't know, it's, it's a program through the Black Earth Library where our students here can go online and get a tutor to help them, and the, and I asked, how much is it getting used, and they said they always are maxed out and they're out, so our students are taking advantage of it, so it's a fundraiser, it's, uh, Sunday, September eighteenth from two to five, um, at the Roxbury Tavern, if you're interested in participating or donating, that's the flyer for that, and you can get a copy over there. Um, the other one is, uh, another program through the library about the Battle of Wisconsin Heights, so if you were wondering, um, we have a name. Says that there's an author that wrote a book, and Saturday, September seventeenth, they're gonna do a presentation here in this room, where am I now, at one P M., and then they're gonna go out and actually tour the battleground, so you, if you ever wondered, this might be an opportunity, and I don't believe you're ever gonna be rocking it.
Is that all you have to do?
Yeah.
Thank you. Alright, district business. Personnel.
Before I make a resounding acknowledgement of this, I would have to ask, is the check good?
Do you wanna respond to that?
We have the check, and, um, we had two situations, we had the ability to drive it into town and cash it, and come back out, and, you know, then somehow you decided you've been away, but then you get right another check, and, uh, 'cause the days are gone, or you call up the bank or whatever, and you say, is it running? I thought, uh, I thought I didn't wanna compound the problem by running it in that town and cashing it, so the answer is no, I didn't, that kind of everything, the other issue would be, the bank would either give you a cashless check or something, so he chose to...
Okay, then I will make a motion to gladly accept the resignation of Ms. Kirchbaum, provided that the check is cleared, if not, then, no.
Do you want to say it?
Say it.
Discussion?
I'm just a happy man today, it's a beautiful day in the neighborhood.
Hearing none, Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yeah.
Sandy?
Yes.
Bart?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Tom?
Oh, yeah.
Although yes as well. Alright, do I have the, um, motion to accept, um, actions five-two and five-three?
Oh, sadness.
Yes.
It's a loss.
Who said, who said the motion?
Sorry, I don't know.
Did you want to first?
I'll first that.
And I'll second it.
Discussion?
Yeah. Unfortunate.
Alright. Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yeah.
Sandy?
Yes.
Bart?
Cindy?
Yes.
Tom? Although yes. Do I have a motion to accept action items five-four through five-eight?
I'll make that one.
I'll second.
Discussion? We got a library.
Let me see.
Yes.
We got a library, that is awesome. Good job, everybody, good job, good job, good job, 'cause we were contracting formally through...
And I will say, my daughter absolutely loves Mr. Mike Kirk.
Alright, who was the first one to say it, buddy? Sandy, especially, you may second. Alright, Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Bart?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Tom? Although yes as well. District business.
Can we now do five-point three, five-point four?
Five-one, five-two, five-three, five-four. Alright, district business, bye now, review twenty-fifteen, twenty-sixteen budget.
Uh, I'm sorry, it's kind of on time, I got a little memo there on your table, and if you bear with me, I can walk you through a couple minutes, I thought I begged a question, um, you know, how did we finish last year, and I apologize if you already knew this, but I'm risking, so, just a little spiel, it won't take that long, and about the worst teaching thing to do is hand out a piece of paper and then try and talk, but I'll do that, that's, uh, general fund, you know, in the school business, we have different funds, the general fund is the one where most of the school business takes place, that's the teaching, learning, the schools, paying the bills, you know, that kind of stuff, then we split out special education into another fund, and they do that, 'cause we have to know what we're spending on that, and there's another kind of, uh, aid on it, and we have federal grants and that kind of stuff, so, we track special ed too, then in your case, we have, like, student activity, I can put that on here, and you have debt service, which is like mortgage, or the loans you might have on big things, and we have food service as well, and then we also have a scholarship fund, but the big four, general spec ad, debt service, and food service, and I thought we touched base, because we need a little understanding here as we move forward in the referendum, about where we are, and what's going on, and those kinds of things, so if you bear with me, general fund, you did set up last year's budget to run a deficit, you were gonna draw about a half million dollars or something, and that's 'cause you have money coming in from the D O T, and the utility settlement, all kinds of things, that's what paid for the party, you know, so it should be no super, usually you hear deficit, you get jumpy, you think, what is that? But we were planning one anyhow, it came in a little better, about a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars better, so you have this thing called fund balance, that could add to your savings, instead of, uh, you know, drawing five-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand, we end up driving, drawing four-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand, so that's good news, and then you, you, you know, you might wonder, why did that happen? Well, revenues, we were on target with those, they're only about twelve thousand dollars, we're tied about ten million, so these are pretty good old numbers, but twelve thousand weren't expended, uh, expected, and expenditures came in a little less, so, uh, and then you, you know, and that's a general statement, you get a little bit here and a little less there, and that gives you an idea how it works, our fund balance then is projected to be three million eighty-one thousand, that's about thirty percent, and what you do is, you, you need cash on hand to run the business, and so I take, like, the fund ten operations, and you, then you look at your fund balance, and that's where the thirty percent comes, comes out of, you know, like they say, rough numbers, you have three million in fund balance, ten million dollar budget, that's thirty percent, now that's important, because, you know, we, it's a crazy business, you run the whole school year, and you don't really get the money to later, so, you know, um, we have to get, we get August taxes, but they're from early last year, so we have cash in it, and then we don't get any real huge cash until a little bit in December, state aid, and then in January, you start to get property tax, and then that's gotta carry you, in June, you finally get a big chunk of state aid, and then in August, you get more property taxes, so, you know, it's not like we get a million dollars a month, so what happens when your fund balance is a little low, then you gotta borrow for cash, and districts, I've been in districts, we borrowed the second week of July, 'cause we had a hundred, fund balance of fifty thousand dollars, you guys are pretty, are very healthy, actually, thirty percent, now, last year came to play, we had to go borrow money for eighteen days, you know, and that's fine, I remember working on that when I was here, and the local banker said, you guys never really have to draw it, but, you know, that's, but as your budget gets more and more and more, then it makes sense, if you, if you need a certain percentage, and my, my feel for it is probably around thirty percent, you can do that without borrowing, that's good, the interest is pretty minimal in this business, but why borrow money if you, the other side, when investments were much higher, you could really see the swing, you'd have, you'd have three million dollars invested out there, so that makes for a nice thing, but it beats, you know, one in doubt, you'd rather invest if they are too straight, so, anyhow, that's where we are, to give you an idea of where we've been, I listed the last couple years, you've been as high as forty-five, that's probably when the D O T settlement came, and you had some Black Earth money, that's before we laid out a bunch of money on the capital. So, we already touched on...
I've already been referendum dollars too, correct?
Yeah, in the, in the budget, of course, are, you know, the referendum dollars, so to speak, that when you pass that, you say, well, here's what the state will give us, we need a little more, you know, this year, and then the next year, and the next year, and sometimes, you know, be a nice problem, they have too much, but even with the referendum dollars, in your case, it's kind of skewed by the big capital projects, that parking lot of the big one, and the utility settlement, nice problem to have, I was on that a couple years ago when I was here, and then the D O T, you know, you're able to do a lot of stuff, so that's good, um, special ed, uh, I see I got a bigger fund here, it's really not that big a news, doesn't deserve a big five, it's a little lower, and, uh, you've got about forty-two thousand dollars of unspent money, which we try to, we try not to spend a dollar until something comes up, if we can carry some federal flow through money, it's called, then if we need an aid, or we have to do something, then we've got a little wiggle on there, so, special ed did alright, it's always interesting that, in our case, uh, six-hundred-and-ninety-one, or fifty-eight percent of special ed is funded by local dollars, many years supposedly, you know, they were gonna pay for at least two-thirds or so of that, that we get reimbursed about twenty-seven cents, something like that, maybe, twenty-six or twenty-seven cents on the dollar, you know, when they passed this thing forty years ago, they were gonna pay for it, but, that's okay, it's good stuff for kids, but I thought it important, you know, again, in the future, someone said, well, you're spending all our money on spec ad, well, you're not that far off, but we are spending a lot of money, but fifty-eight percent, so we do get some help, debt service, you don't have a whole lot of debt, which you're probably aware of, you've only got four payments left, although as you paid off when I was here, I think you had three loans a couple years ago, you paid them off, so, debt service, uh, the payments are roughly similar, but you did a, a deal a while back with, with the feds and bonding, and you get some interest subsidies, so, it's a pretty good deal, and four years from now, you're gonna be debt-free, I think that, that must've come up in your discussion room, building options, and all that kind of stuff, you're in kind of a good spot, with only four years of debt. Food service? That one had a pretty good year, I mean, you went into the year thinking you might have to subsidize it by forty-seven thousand, and ended up fifteen thousand.
But we were short staffed, that's the reason.
Yeah, thank you, sure, so, we lived through the year with some staff, so for this year, we're thinking thirty-ish, right? Thirty-ish, to give you an idea, but that one's bounced around, and of course, now, the good news is your enrollment picks up a little bit, especially if they're kind, they're kind of coming to school here, and hopefully they'll eat, you know, there's a point where enrollment drops down, but you know, when you have declining enrollment, that's a lot less customers that walk in the door every morning, so this helps when you have a lot more, so, gives, I hope that gives you a little feel for what we've been looking at, and then, we're moving into the new budget and fine tuning that, and I'll, I'll get a memo to you ahead on that, so you know what we're doing, 'cause of course, we're ramping up now for the end of meeting stuff, new budget looks pretty good, we're making things fit, and I don't think we're gonna need any kind of draw, I was gonna ask, did we ever even talk about a draw for this, the deficit for this upcoming year, I think we can make it all fit, even with the staff we have, and decent amount of projects, so, I'll, you know, Sharon and I are proceeding with the idea, we're not gonna draw this, okay?
Thanks, Randy.
Yep. I wanna just publicly also thank, I mean, the last month has been a lot of extra time for all of you, and we should appreciate it, that, uh, everything that you've done, and how hard you were against timelines, and succeeded.
Alright, district business, board calendar, okay, this is something new, sort of, that I've got for you guys, it's a print, print, I printed out, um, what it is, is basically kind of just, there's just ideas I put on here, I would've shared with a Google box, but I'm not really sure, well, like, working documents with board members on that, so I'm going to just print it, edit it to you, so you can work on it individually, and we'll come back later and talk about it, um, what it is, is just ideas and kind of highlighted areas, like on the top of each month, about things that should be happening during certain parts of the year, they're not set in stone, like, I don't know all of this, but as we look towards possibly finding a new superintendent, or when we find a new superintendent, and when we, you know, go to talk about certain things, it's good to have a year one calendar to guide our board homes, I think this is a good starting point, maybe, where we're, you know, when the next board comes in, maybe next year, we can wrap up the conversation by time, you know, whatever the isolation is, so we can actually get some of these things in writing, and work towards having something that identifies with the course of the entire year, so just take this home, look at it, um, come back, write down ideas, if you see something that's in the wrong spot, that historically has been in a different spot, please write it in there, um, and then we'll come back and kind of talk about things that are missing and things that need to be moved up. Alright.
Thank you.
Can I give you another question?
Isaiah, December, you and I talked about this.
Oh, yeah.
Are you gonna, your December one, are you gonna get, build this one meeting?
Uh...
'Cause you're looking at the twelfth and the twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, thirty-one?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
You can have it all by yourself.
You can have it all by yourself.
Um, why, why don't we cross that bridge when we get there? Obviously, we're not gonna be doing the twenty-sixth. Everybody just wanna do it...
The only, the only thing we've ever done is moved it up the week before. Um, that's the only thing we've ever done, but typically speaking, we don't have a second one in December.
Fair enough.
And usually, if, if nothing else, the only reason you'd have the second one is if you need, um, to approve disbursements. But if we can get all that done in one, we could have one meeting in the month, either the second or the third, on day.
Perfect, so we'll just strike out the twenty-sixth. Again, there's a lot of things on here that are not, not set in stone, okay? There's lots of changes that need to happen, but...
Sure.
We'll get, we'll change the twenty-sixth, obviously. Um, yeah, otherwise, that's for your viewing, reading pleasure, and just come back with a bunch of highlighted corrections for us all to make, and we can start working on it, hammer it out, and go from there. Moving on, action to approve open enrollment requests, or alternative requests.
I will make that motion, cause it's so descriptive.
I'll second.
Alright, discussion.
Yeah, but it's in, that's good.
It's good. Jim.
Yes.
Jim. Sandy.
Yes.
Barb. Cindy.
Yes.
Tom. Yeah.
Although yes as well.
I'm sorry, I missed the motion, who motioned?
I can.
Who seconded it? Thank you, I'm sorry.
Alright. The motion to this, what is it?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
The motion to... Is that what it is? To the future, no, no, I got, hold on, we got a...
We can...
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, do we have, was that?
Do we need to do that enclosed or open?
Yeah.
Either, I mean, if you think you need to discuss it and discuss the nature of it, and why, then you should, you can do it enclosed, Attorney Freeman said you can make the motion enclosed.
I'll still close.
Yeah.
I'll do the closure.
Okay?
We need to make a motion to move that to closed, so no action right now.
Uh, we gotta...
It says it's possible, full session.
No, there's no action right now, but it's a question. Tom, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Alright, future meeting dates, like, meeting dates, committee meeting dates coming up?
Were you able to work with the teachers?
They're, um, I think they'll be back, she was telling it, she, she was trolling, so I'll let you guys know.
Okay, yeah. So, we're working on some meetings. Yes, absolutely, that's what I wrote, you're in the meeting, we're in the race, yeah. Yeah, they were Monday, yeah.
Keep your Mondays loose, and I'll let you know as soon as I know.
Alright, anybody else have any committee meetings they need to come up? Anybody? Alright, the future meeting dates, twenty-sixth, the next board meeting, I think the tenth, and then the annual meeting is the twenty-fourth. So, we're kind of rolling into the fall, pretty quickly here. Any other upcoming district events, have you got, you got any home football games coming?
Uh, there's two home football games left, and two away games left, and then on the fourteenth of October, that's still to be determined as to who we play. That one might be a long road trip, is what I've been told.
Yeah, two weeks.
Yeah, that'll be the next home game, so they're away, they're away this Friday, then home, then away, then home.
Yeah, and the parade this year is in Mesa.
Okay, the parade's in Mesa?
Okay.
Alright, so, do I have a motion to adjourn the executive session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen twenty-five, plus one? As you see, considering the platting, motion compensation or performance evaluation, do you have any power over which the government body's jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, and to consider student records under Wisconsin statute one eighteen-one-two-five, and three, three-four CFR, part ninety-nine? Uh, when the executive session ends, the school board meeting is adjourned.
That's one I wanna interrupt you on.
Some of them.
That's a big one.
Alright, discussion, Erin, Jim.
Yes.
James.
Yeah.
Sandy. Barb.
Yes.
Cindy.
Yes.
Tom.
Yep.
Although yes as well. Thanks for coming.